This conference will now be recorded.
In the last session, we were talking about how do we create invoice document? How do we create payment document with respect to vendor, customer in short? Accounts payable invoice, accounts receivable invoice and payment for customer, payment for vendor. This we understood because of a topic you called document splitting. In the document splitting, we understood there are two types. In short, active document splitting, passive document splitting, these two is what we understood conceptually in the previous session. Invoice document, credit memo document, we understood. We will be using the document splitting with active methodology. For payment document and for clearing document, we understood, we will be using passive document splitting. Now, we will try to understand payment process a little more. We will try to understand payment process a little more in continuation with what we did in the last session. Okay. Now, first point, whenever we are talking about any payment, first thing that should strike your mind is mode of payment. Because when we are talking about payment, it can be either payment made to vendor or it can be either payment received from vendor. So, if I put payment made to vendor. Second one, payment received from customer. Are these two statements clear?
Yes sir.
Alright, point number one, we will be processing or we will be making a payment to vendor. Point number two, we will be collecting or we will be receiving a payment from our customer. Now, when you are talking about mode of payment here, first point you need to understand. When you are trying to process payment to vendor, there are multiple ways how you can process payment to your supplier or to your vendor. Point number one, we can pay through cash, possible or not?
Yes.
We can pay through cash, possible. Point number two, we can issue a cheque, is this also possible?
Yes.
You can pay cash, you can issue a cheque or you can also do a transfer. These three, I hope everybody is clear with.
Yes sir.
Right, this is clear for everybody. Next point, when you are talking about payment received from a customer. Same thing, your customer might pay you in cash, customer might give you a cheque, customer might also do a transfer to your account. Is this the same for customer vendor?
Yes sir.
Right, to a vendor, the way you are processing the payment from your customer in the similar way, you might be receiving from your customer. Now, two things or couple of things which we need to understand here. In any business process, buying and selling is a regular day-to-day activity, am I correct? In any organization, in any business, buying and selling, in short purchases, sale is a regular day-to-day activity, is my statement clear?
Yes sir.
Yes sir.
So, when we are talking about buying and selling, we are talking about sales and purchases. We are talking about sales and purchases here. Now, these sales and purchases is also part of AP and AR. In short, customer and vendor, yes or no?
Yes.
In every organization, these are the key points which are going to happen on a daily basis without any exception. In any organization, let it be a small startup company or a top level company, these things are going to happen on a daily basis. Now, what we need to understand from these point is, when we know that we are going to make different kind of transactions with customer vendor on a daily basis, you will also need to do the payment settlement. Right, we also need to make payment settlement, either you need to process payment or you need to receive the payment. How your payments are processed, how your payments are received, based on what date? For any payment, there is a date, right? On which I need to collect, on which I need to pay.
Yeah.
There is something called due date.
Due date.
Now, whenever anybody is talking about payment, nobody will pay just like that. Everybody will process the payment based on the due date, am I correct?
Yes.
I will process the payment, you will process the payment or anybody will process the payment only when the payment is due for payment, else nobody will pay. For example, you are on twenty-sixth, let us say you need to pay rent on fifteenth of every month, do you pay it on twenty-sixth? Or you will pay on fifteenth only or maybe one day before?
Now, by due date, that means either before the due date or by due date.
Right, so we will be processing the payment on due date only, we will not be processing payment early, nobody will do it. For example, you are working now, let us say your salary due date is either last working day of the month or maybe first week of the month or maybe second, third day of the month, am I correct? Will anybody give you salary in between, on tenth you take salary this month, I have money, I am paying you early, will anybody do it?
No, on the salary date itself.
Right, they will process the payment only on the due date because this is the process which is followed across all the organizations strictly. So, when we are also talking about any payment, you also need to make sure, you need to understand the due date. Now, your due date is coming from the invoice or due date is coming from the payment?
Due date coming from the invoice.
Right, due date is always coming from the invoice. When we say due date is coming from the invoice, we need to make sure, whenever you do any transaction between buyer and seller, transaction between buyer and seller is represented as sale and purchase, am I correct? A transaction between a buyer and a seller, we will be representing it as a sale or purchase transaction. Transaction is the same, impact is two ways, one way it is purchased, the other way it is a sale.
Yes, yes.
Right, one way it is a purchase, other way it is a sale. Now, what we need to understand from a transaction is that you need to ensure that whenever a business transaction is taking place between buyer and seller, there is an agreement. When we say there is an agreement between buyer and seller, they will come to a common agreement or a mutual understanding that, okay, whenever we do the transaction, let us have the settlement in one month. Or whenever we do the transaction, let us have the settlement within fifteen days, let us have the settlement within forty-five days, let us have the settlement within two months likewise. Or they might also discuss, if you process the payment within a month, you can take five percent discount. Or if you process the payment within fifteen days, I will give you ten percent discount. Depending on the buyer and seller, there may be different kind of terms, there may be different kind of terms which we need to slowly understand. Not necessarily straight away, we will jump into the payment, but slowly we need to make sure, okay, when somebody is processing a payment, this is what they are going to do. Whenever somebody is processing a payment, on this basis, on this logic, they are going to process the payment. Because I cannot say after purchasing currently, I don't have money, I will pay when I get money. Your buyer is not your friend, you are not family, salary is not your friend, salary is not your family, am I correct? Because it is a legal business transaction, yes or no?
Yes.
As per the agreement, as per the agreement, if the agreement talks about we need to make the payment or we need to do the settlement within a month. No matter what the moment I sell, if I am selling today on twenty-sixth December, I need to make you the payment within twenty-sixth January. Or you need to process the payment within or before twenty-sixth January because our agreement is one month only. Whenever I purchase, from that date, I need to process payment within a month. You also need to ensure, okay, I processed a sale today on twenty-sixth December, I am supposed to receive the money from my customer before twenty-sixth January. Accordingly, I do have my calculations, I may be assuming today I will receive money. Simple example, let us say you are all working. Simple example, you are all working, today is what? What is today's date?
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth December.
Twenty-sixth December. Let us say today, my account balance is only thousand rupees. Let us say on today, my account balance is only thousand rupees. Now, I want to buy something for new year or some, something I have to spend, something I need to spend, something I need to buy or I have some commitments. Now, I know that on thirty-first or on thirtieth, I am going to receive the salary, do I know or I do not know?
Yes, I know.
Yes.
If I am working, that okay, on thirtieth December or on thirty-first December or on twenty-ninth December, I will be receiving my salary. Now, today is twenty-sixth, but I am mentally prepared on twenty-sixth, on twenty-ninth or on thirtieth or by thirty-first, I will be receiving my salary. My bank account balance will be, let us say, from thousand to, it will go fifty thousand, yes or no?
Yes.
Yes, I did not receive money yet, but I am confident because I know that on this date, my employer will pay salary. Because this is agreement between you and your employer. Corrector, but there may be situations, there may be situations, you may not receive salary on time, that is also possible?
Yes, yes.
Right, there may be different reasons, but not every time because there is always an exception when you are talking from a business process point of view. Whatever we understand, whatever we look at, not necessarily happening every time, there will be exceptions which we need to understand. In fact, these exceptions is what we need to understand. When I say these exceptions, we need to understand what are all the situations, what are all the scenarios where things might not work as expected? When we know the situation in which things are not working as expected, why things are not working as expected? What are the reasons? How are we going to deal this kind of a situation is what we need to majorly focus. If it is a simple, if it is a straightforward, everybody will know about it, but when there is a problem, when there is a difficulty, when there is a situation where things are not happening as expected, as a consultant, you need to step in, you need to solve it. For which you need either a proper understanding or you need an experience, am I correct?
Yes.
In these situations to move forward, in these situations to act smartly, point number one, you must be experienced. Point number two, you should be thoroughly understanding this kind of a situation, okay, in this kind of a situation, this is how we need to understand, this is how we need to move forward, that understanding, that knowledge will help you handle the situation. Now, here, when you are talking about due date, due date is calculated for payment and the due date is based on the invoice document. Your invoice will tell why, when you need to process the payment. Now, for processing the payment, I have three options. Point number one, I can give cash, point number two, I can give a cheque, point number three, I can give transfer, I mean, I can do a transfer. Now, when you are talking about cash payment, if I made a purchase of two hundred rupees, can I give cash?
Yes, yes.
If I purchased for two hundred rupees, I can give cash, if I purchased for thousand rupees, can I give cash?
Yes.
Yes.
Right, if I purchase for, you know, forty thousand rupees, can I give cash?
No.
No.
Right, if I, let us say, purchased for, you know, I am importing or I am purchasing a huge dump of material, can I process payment of huge money through cash?
No, no.
No.
I cannot give because there are certain limitations, right, when I am talking about cash payment, there will, there will be limitation in every organization, there will be limitation in every country, there will be limitation from bank perspective also. There are many control points which will come into the picture, which will stop you processing the cash payment. Every company will have, no company will keep liquid cash with them, right? So, whenever there is a need for them to process the payment, what they will do, they will opt for cash payment or they will opt for bank payment.
Opt for bank payment, no.
They will be opting for bank payment, when somebody is opting for bank payment, your bank payment can be classified into two. Point number one, bank payment with the help of a cheque. Point number two, bank payment with the help of bank-to-bank transfer.
Yes.
So, when we are understanding, okay, whenever somebody is processing a payment, your payment, either you are receiving it, payment, you are making it, either you process or you receive it, it will be majority only bank transfer only or it will be majority through bank account only. Through bank account, either use a cheque, through bank account, either use a transfer. When I am talking about a cheque, there are two ways to prepare a cheque. Point number one, point number one, how do you prepare a cheque? What you will get for you to issue a cheque to me, let us say, you are learning SAP, if you go from me, I will tell course fees is some twenty thousand rupees. Now, you need to process payment to me, you have two options. Option number one, you can give a cheque to me, option number two, you can do a transfer to me. If I say that please issue a cheque to me or please give me a cheque. Please give me a cheque, what you are going to do to write a cheque, first of all, you need to have a cheque with you?
Yes.
Yes.
What do you get from the bank to get the cheque, what is that called, which term we will use?
Cheque book, cheque book.
You will have cheque book, when you are talking about cheque book, in general, your cheque book contains how many pages?
Ten pages or twenty pages.
Ten, maybe twenty, maybe thirty, it will be small because you are using personal banking, am I correct?
Yes.
Banking, whatever we use it, is called as a personal banking. So, you are not going to write so many cheques on a daily basis, right, you may be writing a cheque. Maybe very rarely, not regularly, right? But when you are talking about a company perspective, company will be using a personal banking or corporate banking.
Corporate banks. Check lots.
Companies will be using corporate banking, when a company is using a corporate banking, are ten cheques enough for a company?
No sir, no.
No.
Twenty cheques enough for a company, no, because we are all aware, in any company, if I have to process payment, for example, if we have to process payment to vendors. First thing, before we understand further about processing payment to vendor, in general, in a company, how many vendors will be there? One vendor, two vendor, five vendor, ten vendor, hundred vendors, thousands of vendors?
Thousands of vendors. Hundred, thousand.
Definitely, definitely vendors will be in thousands, maybe two thousand vendors, fifteen hundred vendor, five thousand vendors, three thousand vendor. Maximum you will be having four-digit vendor, four-digit vendor means in thousands only, am I correct?
Yes.
Right, any organization you take, they will be definitely having thousands of vendors. We are talking about an organization where SAP is used. Slowly, you need to make sure, first, we will try to understand the logic, we will try to understand the concept. Slowly, we will try to connect the same logic, same concept with a company where SAP is used. Point number one, SAP cannot be used by a small companies, am I correct?
Yes, yes sir.
Point number one, SAP cannot be used by a small company, when you are dealing about, when you are talking about a big, big company, they will be having huge number of vendors. When we say they will be having huge number of vendor, now, not every vendor will have a active transaction, am I correct? From some vendor, you may be doing the business very rarely, from some vendor, you may be doing the business very frequently, possible?
Yes.
Right, some vendor invoices are due today, some vendor invoices are due tomorrow. Like, not every vendor is due for payment today, even if a vendor is due for payment today, not all his transactions are due today, agree? Some may be due today, some may be due next week, some may be due next month and all. So, here, when you are talking about this, you will be getting different kind of due dates. Now, looking at all these things, we need to process the payment while doing it, for example, if I have thousands of vendor, let us take some eighty vendors I need to process payment, easily possible?
Yes.
Right, let us say I need to process payment for two hundred vendors, easily possible?
Yes.
Right, so, if I take the first case, if I need to process payment for eighty vendor, how many cheques I need to take?
Eighty cheques. Eighty.
Eighty cheques. Now, definitely, company will not get a cheque book from the bank which contains eighty pages in it, right, eighty cheque leaves, am I correct? So, definitely, company will not get cheque book. If I needed two hundred vendor payment, I needed two hundred cheque papers, cheque leaves, definitely, you will not get a book of, you know, the cheque which contains the two hundred, am I correct?
Yes.
Yes.
So, your company will be receiving cheques in a different format from the bank. So, you know, you will get all the A-four size sheets, in the similar way, you will get the cheques. Now, everybody knows the size of the cheque, it will be somewhere like this.
Yes sir. Yes sir.
It will be somewhere like this, agree?
Yes, yes.
You look at a cheque, cheque will be representing something like this. Now, for me to have two hundred cheques like this, is it practically possible for you to sit and write two hundred vendor name, two hundred times amount, amount in words and all?
It is very time-consuming, yeah, time take.
Right, it is time-consuming or sometimes we may make spelling mistakes. Because whenever you are writing a cheque, you need to make sure name is without any spelling mistake, am I correct?
Yes.
Corrector, if you put a spelling mistake and if I strike out, if I strike out the name, if I rewrite it, will bank accept the cheque? If there are any corrections on the cheque?
No.
No, right, bank will not accept if you have any corrections on the cheque. Now, there are so many things which we need to consider when you are talking about issuing a cheque to a vendor, agree?
Yes.
Now, in general, in general, to write a cheque, what information we need to put? I think somebody who has background of noise, please be on mute. Okay, in general, for you to write a cheque, what information we need to update or we need to manually write, I hope everybody saw the cheque.
Yes sir.
Yes.
So, in general, on the cheque, first thing you will have the date that we need to manually write. We are only talking about the place where we need to write manually on pen, with pen. First thing, you will write the date, you write date on the left side of the cheque or on the right side of the cheque?
Right side of the cheque.
Right side.
Right side, right side of the cheque, for example, I will put date something like this, okay? Let us say, right side of the cheque, you will put date. Anything else you will put on the right side, where you will put amount?
Below at the bottom of the right side. Amount will be two, one is word and another is number.
Number.
Yes sir.
Where will be number?
Below the bottom of the left side, left side or.
Not amount in words, only amount.
Below the date, yeah.
We are just assuming, it is not necessarily we have to be correct, but at least we are getting an idea, that is all. So that when you are talking about any payment, when you are talking about any payment, when you are talking about cheque payment, it should sit in your mind. Then, it is practically possible for you to connect, relate, what are we talking about, why payments are happening in the organization? There are other topics which we are going to connect with the help of this. And you need to also put the name.
Yes.
Where do you write the name, left side, right side, top, bottom?
Left side.
Left side.
Okay, let us say, I will put, is it name or payee, what will be mentioned?
To pay.
Pay.
To.
Or let us say only payee. Okay, let us write only payee. Position may be here and there, but this is how majority it will be listed, what else will be listed?
Amount in words.
Amount in words, let us say, amount in words. This is also, okay, this, this. Anything else?
Signature.
Account number.
So, we. That is pre-printed, that will be pre-printed on the cheque. Cheque comes along with your bank number, bank account number and all, it has got pre-printed on the cheque, right? So, you will have, sometimes you will have one signature, sometimes you may also have two signatures. Corrector?
Yes, yes sir.
You might have single signature, you might also have double signature, based on the company requirement, if the amount is, let us say, very high, you, you may be deciding, no, single signature is not sufficient, two signs may be required. Okay, this is what basically we need to mention, in case, if you are writing a cheque manually. But is it practically possible for us to write cheques manually?
No.
It is not possible for us to write these cheques manually because there is always a chance of misinterpretation or somebody might misuse utilize the cheque, instead of writing one thousand, somebody may put three, four zeros extra, possible or not? If I am the accountant, I may put two, three zeros additionally also, right? Manipulation is possible or not?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Manipulation is possible, incorrect usage may be possible, companies does not want that. Company does not want it, company does not want to say, no, I don't want anybody to write any cheque manually because there is always a risk in it. So, they don't want to write any cheque manually if they are using SAP. Now, what will be the option for me to write a cheque, for me to issue a cheque? I need to make sure my cheque is printed from the system. My cheque is printed from the system, if you recollect a cheque number or if you recollect a cheque book, a cheque leaf basically, cheque leaf contains the same information, on the top, you may be having, let us say, HDFC Bank Limited, whatever may be, the name may be mentioned, your account number and all will be given at the bottom, am I correct? Which is pre-printed by the bank?
Yes.
Right, the other information is pre-printed by the bank, which we have nothing to do. All you need to make sure is these one, two, three, four, five, six column maximum, we need to update on the cheque. Now, point number one, when you are writing this cheque, manual intervention is eliminated, no manual writing of a cheque. Point number two, this cheque must be printed automatically by the system. When we know cheque must be printed automatically by the system, we need to understand how this cheque is coming automatically. Do we need to print or not this? If I don't want to write manually, the only option is to print, agree?
Yes.
Yes.
Wherever we don't want to write manually, you need to print. Even your assignment whatsoever, it is the same thing, I don't want to write, I will type and then I will print out, I will take a printout. When you take a printout, you will print where, on the paper? Corrector? Whenever you print, print, you will take a paper, you will put a paper and then you want output to be generated on the paper or you will save it as a PDF Word document, am I correct? To be printed at a later stage. Is that true?
No, sir.
Yes, no? For you to take a print, do you need a paper or not?
Yes, we need.
Or for you to save it, you need to keep it in the PDF format, Word format. In short, you are going to take a printout here. In short, we are going to take a printout. Now, anything that you are printing, from the SAP terminology point of view, what do we call? Anything that you are printing is called as what?
RISF object.
There's something called
Smart form.
Smart form or form we call it as, what do we call it as?
Smart form.
Smart form.
Smart form. And this is smart form is part of RISF W or RISF object. Both are same, somebody will put W at the beginning, somebody will put a W at the end. Somebody might call you RISF, somebody might call you RISF W, both are same. Don't get confused, it is just that, somebody is adding a W at the beginning or somebody is adding W at the end, otherwise there is no difference. From the RISF object, from the RISF object, your smart form is representing which letter?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
This is F.
F.
This is representing F, we usually call it as form, but it is also called as a smart form. From the RISF object, wherever you are taking a printout, wherever you are generating a PDF, it is called as form or a smart form. Now, who are we? Which module are you learning?
FICO, FICO.
Banking.
We are all learning. FICO. FICO is equal to functional or technical.
Functional.
Functional.
FICO is functional, in short, tomorrow you may be called as a FICO consultant or you may also be called as a functional consultant, am I clear?
Yes.
You may be called as a FICO consultant, somebody might call you as a functional consultant also, both are you only. Either somebody is calling you as a FICO consultant, or somebody is calling you as a functional consultant, both are you only. Now, as a functional consultant, do we work on or do we prepare smart form? Or somebody else will prepare it?
Somebody else, user.
Somebody else.
Who, who is that called? Who will prepare the smart form?
Abab. End user.
Technical.
Abab consultant will create this smart form. This Abab consultant is this Abab functional or technical?
Technical.
Technical.
Technical. Okay. Now, Abab consultant does not know what is the cheque format. Abab consultant does not know what information to be printed on the cheque, because he is a technical consultant. Functional consultant is supposed to understand business process. Functional consultant will suppose, is supposed to understand business process, am I correct? So as a FICO functional consultant, it is our responsibility to understand how the client or business is using the cheque, am I correct? Yes or no?
Yes.
How do you get to know? We need to talk to the user or you will go, sit with the client, user, you will ask them, okay, how are you currently processing the payment to your supplier, to your vendor? They say that we are currently issuing the cheques. Then you need to understand, how are you issuing the cheque? Are you issuing the cheque manually or are you printing the cheque from the system? If they say no, we are writing the cheque manually, okay, can I see the cheque? You need to ask them to show the cheque, okay? If you are issuing a cheque, can I issue cheque from any bank account or I can issue cheque only from a selected bank account?
Selected.
Selected.
Is there any rule, company should have only one bank account or company can have multiple bank accounts? Company can have multiple bank account. When we know company can have multiple bank account, then company can issue cheque from any of their bank accounts, am I correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Alright, so when a company is telling or when a client user is telling, we are currently issuing the cheque, you need to understand, okay? How many bank accounts do you currently have? Then they will tell, okay, we currently have bank accounts in four. Okay, you have four bank account, from how many bank accounts are you issuing the cheques currently? Not necessary from every bank, they will be issuing the cheque. Possible, they may say that, we are currently holding four bank account, but for issuing the cheque, we are using only HDFC Bank. Or for issuing the cheque, we are using only State Bank of India, or for issuing the cheque, we are using only Axis Bank or any other XYZ bank. Or they may say, we are issuing the cheque from all our banks. Any situation is possible, corrector? There is no rule, they should issue only from one bank, there is no rule, they should issue cheque only from two bank. There is no rule that they should issue cheque from all the bank, depending on the client, depending on the requirement, it can be any combination. Now, as a consultant, as a FICO consultant, as a functional consultant, you have to be prepared for it. Do not think, in my previous project, they were using only one bank account, here they are using two bank account, that is different, this is different. From company to company, project to project, requirement, logic, everything will keep on changing. As a consultant, you need to have a thorough conceptual understanding with which you are not confused. First, pay attention on the areas wherein you are not getting confused. Forget about understanding, first make sure you are not getting confused. If you are not getting confused, you will automatically understand. If you are confused, forget about understanding, you cannot even move forward. Make sure slowly, okay, when you are thinking through all these point, different points will be added to your mindset. Tomorrow, when you are at these kind of a situation, they will come out automatically. Now, this cheque, when you look at this cheque, now anybody who is working in India or anybody who is working out of India, country to country, you have central bank?
Yes.
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 For every country, you have central bank, reserve bank or corporate bank or the main bank. Every country might have a different terminology for it, in India you call it as what?
Reserve.
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 RBI, Reserve Bank. Now, if you look at, if you look at cheques now in India, if you look at cheques now in India, every bank account cheque must be same. Am I correct?
Yes.
In India, any bank cheque must be same, meaning, format, layout must be same. When I say format, layout must be same, you put your name anywhere, it is okay, I don't care. But on a cheque, there are certain key fields which are supposed to be written, which we have highlighted with yellow color. On the cheque format, on the Excel sheet, did we highlight certain yellow fields or not?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
How many yellows are there?
Six.
Six. Okay, now as per RBI, every bank, whether it is HDFC Bank, State Bank, XYZ Bank, they must put this field on the same position. They must put this field on the same position. If you take a scale, everybody knows the ruler scale?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and everybody knows how to do the measurement, how many centimeters height, how many centimeters width? Now, if you put a scale ruler here, let's say if I put this, let's say this is coming to thirteen centimeter. Every cheque is thirteen centimeter width, let's say if I do this height, let's say if this is only five centimeter, it is always five centimeter only, you take any bank account cheque. Compare when you look at the cheque next time, and then take the ruler, take the scale, put from top at how many centimeters this payee is there? And from here at how many centimeter, at, at which position, this date column is appearing. You will see that, okay, for all bank account cheques, these points are represented at the same position, anybody noticed it?
No, sir.
No, sir.
Yes, no? Anybody heard something called CTS format?
Yes, sir. Check truncation. Check truncation.
Ah, check?
Check truncation.
Check truncation system?
Yes.
Right? As per this is CTS format, it is immaterial which bank account you are using. Any bank account, if I put a cheque, it has to print here only. Any bank account, if I put the cheque, it should print here only. It is as simple as that, I have put a fixed logic, so whatever the paper you put, I will print here only. You need to make sure on your paper, amount is here only, in short, date will appear here, for example like this. If you say date is coming down, date is going up, date is coming left, right, problem is in your format, not in my program. Because in the project, you will not be giving these kind of a logic for every bank. Because if you are working for Indian clients or if you are working for any company, any country, you need to first understand how cheques are prepared in that country. Is this same format for all the bank account or from bank to bank, there is any difference? For example, option number one, from bank to bank, there is a different format. One bank is having a date here, another bank is having a date position somewhere here and there, then you need to prepare another format or not? Am I correct?
Yes, sir.
You need to prepare one more format. Now, similarly, you need to understand, okay, for me to understand a cheque, it is not okay if I know, I can process payment through cheque, not okay. But how cheque payment is processed from SAP, are you end user? To go to a particular screen, select vendor, put the amount, press enter, payment is made, payment is done, are we end users?
No.
Are we planning to become end user or no? You are a consultant, tomorrow you need to make sure, in the system, with your configuration, in the system, with your knowledge, with your experience, with your understanding, you are able to bring this cheque from the system. For us to bring this cheque from the system, with our knowledge, with our understanding, with our experience, we should understand what do we need, what information we need to gather, we need to collect, to bring this from the system. Slowly, things will start striking our mind, slowly we will be feeling, okay, for me to do it, this is what I need to know. So over a period of time, what will happen when somebody is talking about any vendor payment? Just like that, you will not tell vendor payment accounting entry, you will be striking, you will be thinking, all this point. If you are in the implementation project, if you are talking about any requirement with client user, you know what questions you need to put? Corrector? Just like that, I will tell, I wanted to give a cheque. I need to understand the requirement, right? Without understanding the requirement, I cannot deliver the object. And is this supposed to be created by the FICO consultant or is this supposed to be created by Abab consultant?
Abab consultant.
Abab consultant.
Abab consultant, why this is to be created by Abab consultant, because this is a form which is to be printed. Because this is a form which is to be printed, any form is part of a smart form. Any form is part of a smart form, smart form is part of which object?
RISF.
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 Smart form is part of RISF object. Right? It is part of RISF object, either you call it as RISF or RISF W, it is one and the same, the only difference is W. Are we putting W at the end or are we putting W at the beginning, differentiates how you are pronouncing it? Now, if I come down, if I come down, smart form will be configured or developed?
Development.
Optimization.
Developed by Abab.
Abab.
Consultant. Smart form will be developed by Abab consultant. Now, smart form is part of which object?
RISF.
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 RISF object. Smart form is part of RISF object. For any RISF object. FICO consultant must prepare a document containing detailed business process and then requirement, am I correct?
Yes.
We need to prepare a document which contains detailed business process and business requirement. Now, this document is called as what document?
Functional.
Functional specification. FS.
Functional specification document. Somebody call it as FS, somebody call it as FST, it is one and the same. Somebody might call it as FS, somebody might call it as FST, it is one and the same, only functional specification or functional specification document, it is the same. Now, in the FS we need to provide the detailed requirement along with the logic, agree?
Logic.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
We need to provide the detailed requirement along with the logic. Now, whose responsibility is this? Functional or technical, to give the logic?
Functional.
This is the responsibility of a functional consultant, who is functional consultant here?
FICO.
FICO is the functional consultant, who is FICO consultant? We are only FICO consultants, corrector?
Yes.
Yes.
When we know, we are only FICO consultant, we need to make sure, we are in a position to provide functional specification document. We are in a position to write, understand functional specification document to the Abab consultant, which contains detailed business requirement or business process. To meet this business requirement, what is the logic that Abab consultant need to use? What is the logic that Abab consultant need to use? Now, in short, there are two things. Point number one, manual, point number two, automatic. Point number one, manual, point number two, automatic, whatever I can do manually, whatever I can do manually, can I do it automatically also?
Yes, sir. NEPP absolutely.
Right? Whatever I can do manually, I can do it automatically. But if it is not possible manually, it, it is not possible automatically also, yes or no? If I can do something manually, I can do it automatically also. If I cannot do manually, I cannot do automatic, automatic is not a magic. There is no magic in automatic, whatever you are doing manually, you are doing it automatically, in short, it is one by one, it is all at a time, am I correct?
Yes.
Corrector? In this case of our example related to cheque, if I need to write, if I need to write, let's say, hundred cheques. if I need to write, let's say hundred checks. I need to put hundred times here? This is one time, yes or no? Hundred times will give me hundred checks, one time will give me hundred checks. Clear? So my automatic is not doing any magic here, there is no miracle here. If I can do something manually, same manual activity, I am going to automate it. If I cannot do something manually, I cannot do automation here. I cannot do automation, because automation is nothing but you are avoiding manual activity there, yes or no? You are automating what manual activity, am I correct or not?
Yes.
Manual activity is what we are automating, don't think automatic means something different, out of the world, nothing like that. Whatever you do manually, same thing, you are going to do it automatically. If it is not possible manually, it is not possible automatically also. Now here, in the above process, we are talking about a document, which document?
Functional specification.
Functional specification document, we are writing the functional specification document to automate this manual process, am I correct? We are writing functional specification to automate this manual process, is my statement correct?
Correct. Yes.
I am writing the functional specification to automate this manual process. Because here we are understanding, we need to prepare the functional specification document with detailed business process, with a detailed business requirement, along with the logic. How will I get the logic? Only when I do manually, I will get the logic. Okay, here I need to write it, now I need to put this. How should I write it? Can I write whatever comes in my mind, A B C D, one, two, three, four, okay or not okay?
Not okay.
Not okay, amount can I put by looking at your face, okay, one rupee, by looking at somebody else's face, one thousand rupees, by looking at somebody else's face, one crore, is it okay?
Not okay.
There should be a logic, right? When I say there should be a logic, how are you writing? You are not writing on your own, right? You are following some logic, some certain points we are considering, and then we are putting the number there. Meaning we are checking something and then updating the value manually. What are you checking, how are you updating, what scenarios are there, everything you need to list out. Because manually you know, when this is the situation, this is how I need to proceed. When this is the situation, this is how I need to proceed. All these things are basically your process, requirement, logic, which you need to incorporate in the FS document. How you will understand, only when you look at the current client business process, am I correct? When we are looking at the current client business process, these things will be striking our mind. Not necessarily immediately you will understand, but at least you will get to know, okay, all these things are there, which I need to understand. Tomorrow, when you are talking about vendor payment, I don't want you to just like that tell vendor payment, I know how vendor payment is made. Vendor payment you will do, I will do, because we are only talking about journal entry there. When I say we are only talking about journal entry, vendor accounted debit, bank account credit, okay? If I put vendor accounted debit, bank account credit, is your vendor receiving the payment, no right? Correcta? If I read journal entry here, is my vendor receiving a payment? No, I need to initiate the settlement, right? If I am going to process the check payment, I need to make sure check is prepared. I should know how my check is prepared, is somebody writing a check manually, or somebody printing the check from the system, I should know or I should not know?
Sir, should know.
Right, I should know. And once check is written, how I am going to hand over check to the vendor? Should I call vendor to come to the office and collect the check? Or should I send somebody to the vendor address to hand over the check, or I should courier the check to the vendor? Are all this information required or not? Alright, it is not okay if I say that okay, check payment is made. Anything is possible, right? In some situation, vendor might send somebody to collect the check from your office. In some situation, you will send somebody to deliver the check at the vendor location. In some situation, you might courier the check. Three are possible. What if somebody is asking you this question? In your current project, in your previous project, how check payment was happening? Can I say I do not know, having said I am working in the project? Yes, no?
No sir. No.
Whether you know or you do not know how this is done in SAP, but at least we should know the process, am I correct? When you tell, this is what is happening in my project, this is what was the client requirement. At least the process requirement, whatever you are telling, talking, must be similar, must be realistic. Cannot be something which you are imagining, cannot be something which I am imagining. This is not any imagination, this is something which is practically whatever is possible, whatever is happening, at least if you are able to meet the reality to some extent, it is okay. Tomorrow when you are explaining it to somebody, let other person feel connected to what you are talking. Then slowly you will improve it, when I say slowly you will improve it, you will understand, okay, in my project, this is how the requirement is there, let me understand. Tomorrow when you attend any interview, everybody will ask functional specification or not?
Yeah, it is important.
Question on RISEF object, question on functional specification is mandatory for every FICO consultant to clear their interview. And from your functional specification, you can pick anyone, R, I, C, E, F, W, in short, RISEFW. The check whatever we are writing is called as what? F, smart form, am I correct?
Form.
Now, is this a check mandatory for every organization or it is optional?
Mandatory.
This is mandatory, right?
Option.
This is mandatory, not optional, this is mandatory, for example, let's say, you are working in a company, or you are a company, and in your company, majority we will not be owning our own building, right? We will be running our business operations in a rental property, yes or no? Either your office, or your staff accommodation, or your storage locations, your plant, whatsoever. Will any company have rental property or not?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Every company will have a rental property, can be for their operations, can be for the accommodation, can be for the guest house, can be for the plant, storage, for anything, let it be anything. But all we need to understand is, okay, yes, every company will have a rental property. Now whenever you talk about any rental property, do you really think a company will pay every month amount? Or company will make payment in advance for the first one year? Post-dated payment.
Advance.
Advance.
Post-dated payment.
Anybody heard, you would have heard something called PDC or post-dated check?
Yes.
Yes.
Right, there is something called post-dated check, right? So what I will do, if my rental agreement is from January to December, I may be writing, let's say I need to pay rent on fifth of every month, I will put five twelve twenty twenty four, I will put one more check, five one twenty twenty five, five two twenty twenty five likewise, I will prepare twelve checks and give it to my vendor landlord, am I correct? Though I am giving the check now, he cannot encash it until that day arrives, yes or no?
Yes.
Yes.
Bank will accept the check from that date for next thirty days, for next sixty days, as per the bank rule, whatever it is there. But before the date, it will not be accepted, am I correct? If I put, let's say, five zero one twenty twenty five, can I present this check tomorrow and then get the cash?
No.
No other go, I need to wait until fifth January twenty twenty five?
Yes sir, the value date should be same.
This becomes value date for the payment. Bank will accept, or this payment is valid from fifth January twenty twenty five. So whenever we talk about any bank transaction, we will be talking about a date called value date. Or payment effective date, your payment is effective, or your payment is valid from fifth January twenty twenty five only. Now there may be different requirements, you may be working for any project, any client, any country. Depending on their process, depending on their requirement, we need to ensure, we are in a position to understand at least first. First we will try to understand and then we will see, okay, now I got the requirement. Now let me think through how do I do it in SAP? If you are not in a position to understand the requirement, whatever the configuration we know, whatever the practice we did it, it is practically not helping us, right? First, when I am with the client, I am not going to open my system, I am not going to show the client user. I know the configuration, I created so many checks, I practiced five company code, nothing doing. When your client is talking, sit, understand what your client user is talking. Make sure if you have any queries, clarification, put cross question, get the requirement, accordingly move forward. When I say accordingly move forward, then you need to make sure, because you need to understand the requirement. As a functional consultant, you need to make this requirement understood by the ABAP consultant, who is a technical consultant, am I correct? Point number one, we need to understand, as a functional consultant. Point number two, we need to make the technical consultant also understand the process, yes or no?
Yes sir.
It is our responsibility in any project. This is our responsibility, nobody will do this work on your behalf, it is you who need to perform this activity. We are only talking about ways, basic fundamental form, check, because everybody is aware of it. And from here you need to understand, there is something called RISEF object, which you need to understand. For any RISEF object, you need to prepare FS, FST, functional specification, in which you need to provide detailed business process requirement, along with the logic, how do you do it? Because your RISEF object is basically automation or automatic execution, automatic process. How do you automate it, how do you get the information by one click and all? You need to understand how you can do it manually. Whatever you are doing manually, you are going to automate it, in short, manual steps, one by one, you need to execute automatically through the system. For that, you need to make sure based on the requirement, what needs to be done, how we need to do it, accordingly we need to take it further. Which is slowly we will understand, but you need to ensure, all these points are sitting in your mind. Only then tomorrow when somebody is talking, you will be able to feel connected to what they are talking. Otherwise, now you, most of you may be going blank what I am talking, but this is the reality tomorrow when you are in a project. Most of you may be having many confusions what he is talking about, yes or no? But this is what you need to work, this is what you need to explain tomorrow, when you are in a project. Today there may be a difficulty in understanding what I am talking, but tomorrow, this is the reality. Considering what is going to happen, what you are going to do, we will try to understand, okay, let me first get familiar to what he is talking. Then we will understand every point one by one with practical examples in detail at a slower pace. I may be talking fast now, I may be explaining different, different words now, but this is only to make you feel comfortable that, okay, all these things which I need to understand. We are not talking about any configurations so far, am I correct? Am I writing any configurations?
No.
We are not writing any configuration, but this is what will make you do the configuration. If you do not know this, how will you do it? You cannot do the configuration, if you are not aware of it, these are basically called as your requirement, your process. If these are clear, you will be able to move forward without any difficulty, without any problem. Tomorrow when you are stuck somewhere, tomorrow when you are stuck somewhere, first point, anybody will do is asking you Google. Because Google is our secret agent, whatever you ask Google, Google will not tell anybody. Correcta? So you will go to your secret agent to Google, you will, for you to ask your Google, you need to type something, agree? For you to type, you should know what to type, right? For you to know what to type, you should know what is the requirement. And from the requirement, you should know where you are stuck. From the requirement, you should know what you need. Just like that, Google will not read your mind, am I correct? No matter you use chat GPT or any other AI tool, nothing will read your requirement. In short, consultant work cannot be replaced by AI. Consultant work is always manual only, only end user work can be replaced by AI. Consultant work will not be replaced. As a consultant, you must be present to understand the requirement to what? And then you can automate only the end user activity, not consulting activity. Consulting activity cannot be automated. Only end user activity is also automated, meaning if any of you may be thinking that because of this, you know, robotic automation, bots, all this kind of a thing, will my job be secured? Consultant is required. Consultant is required, end users may not be required, meaning in place of ten user, you may require only two, three user. Or only five users. Because most of the things are automated, I don't need it. But consultant is not like that, you are not supposed to think about it, as a consultant, will my job be secured? It is well secured. Alright, so these points slowly we need to understand, this point whatever we have discussed now, is representing which payment? Check payment.
Check payment.
This is representing check payment, to process a check, this is how you need to look at the check. Now what I want you to do is, look at a check. Simply you Google it, I will not be showing the Googling checks and all, I want you to look at it, connect the points what we are talking here. Right? Many points which I will explain, I may not be showing on the screen. All I will do is, I will make you understand the logic concept, I want you to apply the logic concept, understand by looking at the scenario. When you look at the check, you will be able to plot these points or not? Right, now when you look at the check, these points will strike your mind or not? You will be noticing what is the size of the check, various amount, various date, what is listed here? Next time when you are in the project, the way you look at the check, you don't look at the check as a normal person, you will look at the check as a FICO consultant. When you look at the check, if I want you to, can you give me the logic for this functional specification? I want you to be confident enough to give the logic. It should not be that I do not know how to move forward. You should be confident, comfortable enough to move forward. At least guess, okay, your guesses should be correct. Then things will move, things will work in your favor, otherwise, it will be difficult. When we know things might become difficult, if we do not put proper effort at the beginning, it is not going to add value, or it is not going to give you the result which you are looking for. At the end, everybody wants to get the job in consulting, everybody wants to make sure, you will clear your interview, you will work successfully without any problem. That requires some kind of effort, that requires some kind of a confusing state which we need to cross, which we are trying to get familiar now. Slowly as we move forward, we will make sure, we are able to cross all this obstacles, we will be able to clear all this fundamental confusing point, fundamental mistakes which we are supposed to make, we will make here only. Confusions we will get here only, errors, mistakes we will do here only, so that as you move forward, there is no point you will make mistake, you already made mistake with me. There is no point, again you will make a mistake. Alright, so what I want you to do is, look at this format. Even you can Google it, you put any bank, HDFC bank to check, and then you put this format called CTS a check format. Put this terminology. CTS check format, and then look at what points are there on the check. Check where is the payee, amount in words, date, amount in number, signature at the bottom, that's all. Do not think anything beyond this, just make sure. Just make sure if you are able to look at the check. Point number one, point number two, we are talking about payment. In the payment, we are specifically talking about vendor payment because we are talking about writing a check, not receiving a check. Am I correct? So far, whatever we talked, whatever we discussed, is all about we are writing a check, we are giving a check. For us to write a check, for us to give a check, we need some information. How do we get this information is what I will explain in the tomorrow's session. Tomorrow, I will explain how do we get a date here? How do we get amount here? How do we get pay here? How do you get signature here? By taking this example, whatever we did in the last session. In the last session, we were talking about vendor invoice, vendor payment, active document splitting, passive document splitting. In the next session, I will take an example from the same, same accounting interest we will put along with the number. And then we will see how payment is made, how check is generated from SAP. Then you will be practically understanding, okay, for me to do a vendor payment, for me to do a purchasing, this is what the scenario. For you to do the business, first point what all of us us to do is, to do the purchasing. Yes or no?
Yes.
Yes.
Alright, for example, I started my business. I cannot do standing and working, right? I need to sit. For me to sit, I need chair, at least. Yes or no? I cannot write everything on the book, right? I need to do it on the system. Yes or no? All these things, nobody will donate, right? We need to buy, we need to purchase. Agree? When you are purchasing, when you are buying, to start your initial transaction, how are we going to proceed? Slowly, you will be able to connect, okay, I am starting my business. I am purchasing a computer for me to work. Okay, how do I purchase the computer? Okay, I will buy from a vendor. Okay, vendor is giving me the invoice. Okay, how do I record the invoice? What accounting entry will come? Okay, I recorded invoice. Vendor gave me time of thirty days to pay. Now tomorrow is the due date, I need to pay. How do I pay? Vendor is telling, we don't accept a cash. Please give me a check. Okay, I need to prepare a check. How do I prepare a check? I need to apply for a checkbook. Yes or no? Slowly, these points when we try to understand, you will start realizing, okay, these are all the things which we need to connect in order to process a payment. Now we are all talking, we will all be thinking about creating a company code and all. But before you create a company code and all, you need to have a computer. Correct? In a company, for you to buy a computer, for you to pay to the supplier, for you to pay to the vendor, what will happen? And how it is going to happen, at least at a basic layman perspective, we should have a thorough understanding. That tomorrow if you go and tell to somebody, they should tell, yes, this is correct. It should not be that in SAP, if you go something, you know, out of the box is happening. It is the same everywhere. Am I correct? Process remains the same. Yes or no? Same process when we try to understand, when we try to map it with SAP, you will connect it. The whole objective is to ensure we are connected to the process, we are able to understand the process logic, then we take the same thing into SAP, you will understand by default. Then you will not do any configuration, you will not create any practice blindly. You know that, okay, no, I want to do this. This is my scenario. I wanted to get it from SAP. It's not that I created something, you created something, it is not, no. You will go with an example, you will have a clarity in your mind, you have a scenario in your mind, which is along with the accounting impact. Right from the name of the vendor, right from the date of the invoice, right from the payment of the invoice, value, discount, every point you will take a crystal clear, you will create your own scenarios. That's where you will feel connected to the system, process, requirement. That will make you feel more connected. Initially, I understand you also need to understand, this will take little time. That is the reason we are now trying to understand a different point, which will make understand that, okay, these many things I need to understand. Slowly, from now onward, if you try to put effort, now everybody got to know what and all we need to understand. Yes or no? At least you are getting to know.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Right? You are able to understand, okay, these many things I need to understand. As we move forward, you will also start putting effort, okay, let me see how these payments are happening in any organization. You will understand how these things are happening in any organization, maybe based on your past experience, based on your current organization experience, if you think through. Okay, I am currently working in X Y Z company. My company is also making payments to vendor. Let me ask, let me check with my friend, how payment is happening in my current company? Or your friend may be working as an accountant. Ask your friend, how are you processing payments to vendors? Then you will get to know different points or not. Every company will have a different logic. When we know every company will have a different logic, slowly you will realize, okay, if this is the requirement, if this is the logic, how are they doing it? Now, within the group, there are many people who are working in SAP, who are working in non-SAP and all. Every of, most of you may be aware of this process, whatever I am talking now. Yes, no?
Yes, sir.
Right? The way check is prepared, the way payment is made to vendor, most of you must be aware of it from the business point of view. You can start discussing in your group. If you know that, okay, in your company, this is how payments are made, just to summarize it, maybe two, three line. In my company, invoice is received, they post invoice on the due date, they will process the payment, they are issuing the payment through check. They are writing a check manually. Look at it. That will give insight to another person. They also might put, okay, in my company, this is how they doing it. At some page, some place, somebody will have to initiate it. It should not be like only my message is coming, morning interview session, evening regular session or the recording and all. You should also have continuous discussions going on. Make sure whatever the process, you know, share it. Whatever the others doubts, confusions that they have, put your question, feel free to write your question in the group. Those who are aware of it will respond to you. And see if somebody is putting a question, are you able to respond? Are you able to clarify their question? Second point, if somebody is writing something, am I able to understand it? It is two way. Take it in a positive manner and then when somebody is putting a question, if you know, just give an effort. See to what extent you are able to explain. And from your side, you see if somebody is telling me something or typing something, am I able to understand it? Tomorrow, when you are in a project, not necessarily every time you will talk to the user, right? User will send an email, user will do a chatting on the time, teams. Agree? When this is happening, to what extent we are able to understand, similar thing you are going to experience here. This will happen only when we share our thoughts. This has happened only when you exchange your understanding, your doubts clarification. At the end, we have to share knowledge, we need to ensure everybody is feeling comfortable, confident on the subject. Alright, let me stop this here. Continuation to this, we will do it tomorrow. This is not completed yet. This is only partially done. Continuation to what we have done on the screen now, I will do it in the tomorrow's session, so that confusions, doubts, whatever you are having on it, will be auto rectified in the tomorrow's session. Alright?